Good evening. Welcome this evening to our school board meeting. I'm going to have you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. I will go ahead and have Director Weatherspoon read our land acknowledgement this evening.
Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinookan Peoples and the Kowalski Tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open the space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we will entertain a motion to adopt this evening's agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Seconded.
Yes, we move in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect, thank you. All right, next on our agenda, we have special recognition this evening, which is a lot of fun because there's some great things on here. But first, we're going to start off with Native American Heritage Month, and with us we have Craig Burbach.
As part of our commitment to celebrating diversity and fostering an inclusive school community that allows all students, staff, and families to feel welcome and supported, we as a district and as a school board are participating in Heritage Month celebrations throughout the school year.
In November, we are celebrating Native American Heritage Month. Native American Heritage Month resonates powerfully here in Evergreen Public Schools. Our campuses reside on the traditional lands of the Chinookan Peoples and the Kowalski Tribe.
We are internally indebted to them for the natural beauty of this land, which has cared for over thousands of years by Indigenous people who maintain a balanced, sustainable relationship with the natural world.
Throughout the month, our schools and students will honor Native American Heritage Month by reading books, watching films, and learning about the history that has often been unjust to our Indigenous people.
We will also celebrate the contributions in culture, education, service, and countless other areas that our American Indian, Alaska Native, and Native Hawaiian families make daily in Evergreen Public Schools.
We show respect to our Native Peoples' remarkable perseverance by recognizing their rightful tribal sovereignty and self-determination, and by always keeping their respect for the land in mind as we tackle the challenges presented by climate change.
Please join us in celebrating Native American History Month.
Thank you, Craig. Any comments from the school board or anything? The video did remind me that we should probably excuse Jenny from the meeting.
Yeah.
Go ahead and move that we excuse Jenny from the meeting. I understand she's not available.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
She's online with us.
Have we seen the motion?
Lurking in the background.
Sorry, Jenny, hi.
Glad to have you, Jenny.
Hey, I'm here. Just couldn't be physical.
All right. Next on our agenda is the Evergreen Accreditation Plaque presentation by ESD 112. I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Boyd.
Yes, I'm pleased to introduce some of our partners from the ESD 112 who are incredible partners of ours and help us with so many different things. And one of the things they help us with is high school accreditation. So I'd like to welcome up Mike Nerland, Vicky Hardina, and Kathy Whitlock to make a special presentation to our absolutely stunning, phenomenal high school principal corps.
Thank you, Superintendent Boyd and Evergreen School Board. It's great to be here tonight in this beautiful facility. It's the first time I've been here. It's gorgeous. My name is Mike Nerland, and I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning at ESD 112. And I have with me our Executive Director of Student and School Success, Kathy Whitlock, and our Director of STEM Initiatives and Career Readiness, Vicky Hardina. And it's actually these two leaders that head up our accreditation process. In this last year, six Evergreen High Schools took part in the AESD, the Association of Educational Service District Accreditation. And we really enjoy the process and partnering with high schools throughout southwest Washington in accreditation. As a former high school principal, I know what you go through. As a former high school principal, we went through accreditation three times during my tenure, and it was like jumping through hoops, and it was painful. And it really didn't have anything to do with the work that we were actually doing in the school. That's the one thing about the AESD process. It really is partnering to help with the work that's already taking place in their improvement planning within the school. So it's not something additional. It's something that is an enhancement to what's already taking place. And so I would like to just read a couple of comments from the accreditation reports about each high school, if that's okay. All right, first of all, Evergreen High School and Principal Danny Orantia. Vicky was the accreditation coach, and here's a comment from the report. Each group of stakeholders consistently commented on Danny's presence in the school community and how this works to build shared partnership of the culture, shared ownership of the culture. Congratulations to Evergreen High School. Next, Heritage High School, Principal Derek Garrison, and Vicky was the accreditation coach there as well. At Heritage, there's a clear culture of openness and opportunities for the voices of students, families, and staff to be heard and acted upon. Students and parents commented on caring adults and the inclusion of diverse voices and perspectives. So congratulations to Heritage. Next up is Legacy High School, Principal Andy Schoonover. Vicky was the coach there as well. At Legacy, the strong focus on teacher collaboration is evident. The staff very much enjoy being a part of this school and its new leadership, safe environment. This came across strongly from the students who commented on feeling supported, seen, respected, and valued. Legacy should celebrate this and keep up the momentum. Next up, Mountain View High School. Charles Anthony is the principal. Vicky was the coach there as well. The consistent remark about Mountain View was the amazing clarity with which Mr. Anthony provides to teachers, staff, students, and families. The values of rigor, equity, and meaning were mentioned across the board. This is no small accomplishment in such a large high school. Congratulations, Mountain View. Next up, Union High School, and Principal Griffin Payton, and Kathy was the accreditation coach for Union. At Union, student and family focus groups point to the efforts made by all staff to support the positive climate and culture of the school. A parent stated, "Our kids are their main purpose." And a student remarked, "All staff want us to be successful." Congratulations, Union. Henrietta Lacai School, and Principal Amy Haynes, Kathy was the accreditation coach there. At Hila, there was a recurring theme from students, teachers, parents, the care for and attention to each student. Each student is known and feel like their voices are heard. Congratulations, Hila. Let's give all six a big round of applause. Congratulations. And Amy, the guys said you were nominated to say something, say a few words about the process, so. Seriously, would you like to say anything?
I just want to say, you know, you were all wonderful through the process. Kathy got to work with quite a bit. It is, it felt very meaningful and purposeful and intentional, and really working within all of the efforts that we're making within our schools to support our students and families. And so we just really appreciate the support from the team and going through the process, and it was really valuable and meaningful feedback for all of us. So, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm going to call up Janay Gomes to the podium, who will do the Evergreen Awards this evening.
Good evening, Superintendent Boyd and members of the board. Thank you for having me this evening. We are going to have our first quarter Evergreen Awards. We have classified, certificated, and then we also have a team that will be recognized this evening. In addition to that, we will have ABM and Chartwells will also recognize one of their members for our annual recognition with them. We're going to start with classified. Our first recipient this evening is from Columbia Valley, and Principal Leah Torres is going to introduce and share a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, Janay. Thank you, Superintendent Boyd and the Evergreen Board. It is my absolute pleasure to introduce you to Amy, and I just blanked. So nervous. Introduce yourself. Okay.
Hi there, I'm Amy Price. I'm a parent educator at Columbia Valley, and I've been there, gosh, eight years now.
Yes. Thank you, Amy. And so Amy has been at Columbia Valley for eight years and has this long view, kind of view of students and their strengths because she is with, has been with them for a long time, and she really capitalizes on their strengths, whether she is running a community circle in the classroom and having students share their questions and their thoughts, or helping them with their math understanding or their reading understanding, she is right there with them. When I talk to her colleagues that she works with every day, they said that they love that she has the flexibility and the passion to just step in wherever students need her. And we are just really thrilled to have her and to honor her with this first quarter Evergreen Award for classified staff. Amy, thank you so much.
Are we doing a picture with him now, Chrissy? Okay. If you want to go up by the board and Craig will get your picture. You're the important one right now.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Our recipient for certificated is from Ellsworth Elementary, and Principal Alex Shiwi is going to introduce and say a few words.
Thanks for having us. We get to, this is an honor for me to get to stand up here and talk about Erin for a couple reasons. Erin loves being in the spotlight. You can tell. No, but I get to talk about someone that I have a great deal of respect for. And Erin's been in the district for 28 years, and 13 of those years have been served at Ellsworth, and then I've gotten the pleasure of knowing Erin for the last four. And I want to, I'm going to start with something that was written by one of our teachers about Erin. And Erin is a treasure to the entire staff at Ellsworth. As a rehire to the Evergreen District, Erin has been vital in helping me learn and implement new curriculum. Her previous experience as a classroom teacher helps her to understand the balance of teaching along with the importance of high expectations and modifications within the classroom. Erin is patient. She's always optimistic, imparting a positivity among staff. Her door is always open, and she provides us with meaningful PD and is simultaneously aware of everything else on our plates. I would not have survived the first year here at Ellsworth without her. And it would be easy. I could stand up here and take up all of your time talking about Erin as an instructional coach. She, you know, leads and facilitates our professional development, constantly improving our instruction by giving those nudges to our classroom teachers through coaching cycles or working with our PLCs, sitting through and analyzing our data, making sure that we're making those moves. And like I said, I could focus on that, and I want to focus on the things that you don't see her do on the daily. That's her job. Erin is the first one to, as we dig through that data, and we're trying to figure out how are we going to serve these students because we don't have the bodies, Erin's like, oh, I'll figure it out. I'll put it in my schedule, Alex, I can do that intervention group. I'll make sure I pull those kids. Or I've got time after school to tutor. That's what Erin does. Home visits. Erin doesn't say no, or she's maybe said no to me twice. But it's about serving kids, period. And that's what we do, and we figure out how to get it done. And she is that go-to person for me when we need to figure out how to get it done. So like I said, it's an honor to stand up here. And I have said this before, and Erin's heard me say this before, but you work in a good place when the people around you make you want to be better at your job. You work in a great place when the people around you want to make you, turn you in and want you to be a better person, and that's what Erin does. So congratulations to Erin.
Thank you. He was my kid's first grade teacher, all three of my kids. Oh. That's special. Our third award this evening is a group, and it is Scott Epinger and Sue Steinbrenner are going to come up and introduce them and speak on behalf for our maintenance department.
Superintendent Boyd, it is a pleasure for Sue and I to have this honor, to have our Maintenance and Grounds Team here in front of us as the recipient of the Team Evergreen Award. And to start out, I'd like to just have them introduce themselves and their position.
You started with me, thanks. Kevin Olinger, HVAC and Electrical Lead.
Lori Watson, Secretary to the Director of Maintenance.
Jim Sullivan, Structural Lead. Ted Denke, Assistant Director. Brian Longory, Grounds Foreman.
Marty Madrietta, Director of Maintenance.
It's important to note that this group of, we have six, we have one other secretary that's on vacation this week, is one of 33 members in our Maintenance Department and Maintenance and Grounds Department. And you've heard some of the others that are part of the team there. That says a lot about their team that they showed up tonight. So if you're in Maintenance, you want to, in Grounds, you want to wave, thank you for being here. So this leadership team is the first one to tell you that they can't do the job without the rest of their team, the other 26 people that do this job with them. They also recognize that they can't do this job without the help of the rest of our district departments too. So it truly is a team effort, and they are always about crediting the team when it comes to recognition. So together, our Maintenance and Grounds Team, they support, believe it or not, 3.5 square, 3.5 million square feet, 42 buildings in our district. So if you break that down, if you think of a 2,000-foot square foot home, that is 1,750 homes that this team and the other 26 take care of in our district. Pretty amazing, amazing numbers. I don't know about you, but sometimes I have a hard time just maintaining my own home, so I think that's pretty impressive. While they do a lot of preventative maintenance, and they're really good at it, the place I think they really shine is the emergency maintenance. And that can be anything from, and we've seen pretty much all of it so far, is smoke, haven't seen snow and ice yet, but probably coming, pounding rain, high winds, heating and cooling, downed trees, damaged fences, power outages, plugged lines. They work daily and urgently to make sure that our district is up and running. Marty and the team have already been looking at the weather forecast for this week and thinking ahead what we would need if we should run into snow or ice, and hopefully we won't, but they will be ready for that. And each day, they do this with little or no expectation for recognition. That's not who they are. They're here to do a great job, and they're not worried about the recognition that they really deserve. So with that, I'm going to invite Sue up to share a few comments as well.
Just three things that these guys do really well, really, really well. One, have a sense of urgency. Lori and Beth probably get 15, 20 HVAC calls when the weather turns, and they treat everyone with a sense of urgency. It would be really easy to go, nah, you're my 10th call, I can't take it right now, but they don't. The other thing they do really well is they do things right the first time. We always are good at doing things right the second or third time. We learn from our lessons, we improve. They do a great job at trying to get it done the first time right. The third thing that they do is no excuses, because we don't have time for that, frankly. You got to get the work done. They don't take time, given 10 reasons why they couldn't get it done, they just go out and get it done. I think the other thing, I would say, you won't find a more compassionate group than this for each other, for the buildings, for the crew. Pretty, compassion, I looked it up, it means to suffer together. So I guess we all do that really well. And with that, I just appreciate you guys. You guys make me and Scott look good, and Jeff and Scott, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate that. And I think Marty, you want to say it?
Marty loves public speaking.
Yeah, this is my favorite thing. So I was fortunate enough to be nominated to do this, even though it's my most dreaded thing to do. First of all, we as a group would like to thank the school board and Superintendent Boyd for this award. We are very happy to accept this award on behalf of our Maintenance and Grounds Team. We feel fortunate to manage a highly productive, talented, and professional team that strives to support staff and students. We would also like to thank Sue and Scott and everyone in the Facilities Department, as well as Derek and Elizabeth and IT, Shane and Kyle, Bridget and Safety and Security, as well as Tracy and Janay and their team in HR. They provide us with the needed support to move our department forward. Without their support and the relationships that we have within the buildings and with staff and other departments, we would not be successful in where we are at today. So I want to thank everyone.
I'm just impressed they're all cleaned up. Get a picture up there.
Just don't block the award.
You're good. Right there. Okay, we are going to move on to Chartwells. Who's here from Chartwells to? Yep, Dean, did you guys want to come in? We have great partnership with Chartwells, and so they are going to recognize this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent and Board. This evening, we'd like to recognize a couple of our employees that have worked tirelessly for the district. First of all, of course, I decided to log out. First of all, we'd like to recognize Michelle Gifford. Now, Michelle has been with, serving your students since 1994. I ran a few of the numbers on a rough estimation, but that means that she's served over a million breakfasts and 1.5 million lunches. Yes, in that time. Michelle, in the 28 years, so in the 28 years that Michelle's been here, that is the number that she has served. She is a very quiet soul, and she's very thoughtful and puts a lot of, her principal told us that she puts a lot of thought in the process of how to serve our students with each of the changes that have been coming over the last three years. She'll think about it and consult with the principal and do it very thoughtfully. Michelle is such a quiet soul that she refused to be here this evening, to be publicly recognized for her efforts. But this is one of the reasons we felt that she needed to be recognized. She's always the unsung hero, never complains, and actually goes above and beyond when given a task to do. So with that, and when she refused to come, we rounded up the principal and the vice-principal, and we went in during lunch, and we surprised her today. So I think she's fighting back tears, but this is Michelle Gifford, and she's at Harmony So our second person that we would like to recognize this evening is Grace Lyon from Union High School. Grace has been serving the students here at Evergreen since 2004. During her 18 years, she's served over a half a million breakfasts, high schoolers don't want to eat breakfast, and 1.7 million lunches. Now, that seems like a lot, but over the past three years, when we've had free meals, so the two years of the pandemic and this last year with free meals, she has seen a 71% increase just in her lunch numbers alone. So from going from an average of serving 500 at a day, her and her staff serve 700 a day. Now, this goes to rival Mount, Mountain View. Now, Mountain View has closed their campus this year, has a brand-new kitchen, and they're putting out as many numbers as what Union does. So with Grace and her team, she's risen to the challenge to ensure that each meal is served and prepared with love. So Grace is with us this evening with the support of her husband and one of her astounding employees that's absolutely, you know, if there was a team award that we could give out, it would be these two that run our Union High School, and that's Tatiana. So Grace, thank you. And Dean has a little present for Grace. And Dean has a little present for Grace.
Our final recognition this evening will be ABM, and I believe is Dan Britt coming up for that? And Dan will share with you the name and say a few words.
Good evening, Board members and superintendent Boyd. Thank you for this opportunity. We really appreciate that. We've got a couple of team members here that are being recognized as team members of the year and one for elementary and one for high school. And starting off with Michelle from York Elementary, some things that are outstanding about Michelle, she has extremely high level of cleanliness that she maintains at her school. She is passionate about providing great service to staff and students every day and she's highly valued by her school. And so it's a real pleasure walking through York and just, just has a great feel about it for how well it's been maintained. So thank you, Michelle, for your outstanding performance there. And then Supaul, with us for quite a few years and working at Heritage, he's a long-term team member with, but he's been high performing that whole time and he's taken on additional assignments and projects and everything he does, he does in an excellent fashion. And, um, he's been a great role model to his, his team members as well. So thank you, Supaul, for all you've done for us. And we've got a couple, we've got some gifts for you guys and a card for each of you.
He has my gift. Thank you. Thank you, Janay. It's always fun to recognize our great employees. All right, next on the agenda is our board consent agenda. We will entertain a motion for approval.
Move for approval of the board consent agenda as presented.
Uh, move in second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jenny?
Sorry, couldn't find the button. Aye.
There we go. All right, motion passed, thank you. All right, next up is the superintendent consent agenda.
Move adoption of the superintendent consent agenda as presented.
Move in second and all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Jenny. All right, next up is our public hearing. This is for the instructional materials committee decision appeal, and I have a, uh, just a little background on it before we get started. On Thursday, September 15th to 2022, the instructional materials committee conducted a challenge hearing. The resource challenge was the novel 47 by Walter Mosley. The challenge was to remove the book from the classroom library only. At the conclusion of the hearing, the instructional materials committee voted to remove the book from the classroom library. An appeal of the decision was made to the school board. The board has reviewed the challenge information from the complainants and respondent minutes from the challenge hearing and read the book. This evening, the complainant will provide her testimony on why the decision should be reversed. The board may ask clarifying questions to the complainant during this process. The board will then render a decision at our December 13th meeting. So at this time, I'm going to invite Jennifer Cunningham, the complainant, to come up to the podium to provide her testimony. Jennifer, you want to come on up?
Good evening.
Okay, how's that?
That's perfect, thank you.
Good evening.
Thanks for joining us tonight.
Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about the recent banning of the book 47 by Walter Mosley in the seventh grade classrooms. My name is Jennifer Rodriguez Cunningham. I'm an English teacher at Y East Middle School. I've been teaching English for four years and prior to that, I was a special education teacher. I have my master's in literacy curriculum with a concentration focusing on struggling readers, but this isn't about me, this is about our seventh graders. As a mom myself, I'm very aware of the wide spectrum of seventh graders that come through our classroom doors. Seventh grade is a weird and difficult time. You will have students who still believe in Santa Claus, all the way to students who have seen more and done more than any seventh grader should have ever experienced. It's a wide spectrum of behaviors, beliefs and maturity levels. This is why choosing books for seventh graders is a difficult but important task. As educators, it's important that the work of 47 is considered as a whole, but in addition to that, we as educators need to consider the spectrum of middle schoolers as a whole. What is considered inappropriate for one seventh grader cannot be automatically assumed to be inappropriate for another. That is a personal and family decision. But let's talk about this decision. This decision should never have happened. If we are following the legal processes for challenging a book, this book challenge should have never moved forward beyond the first step. Our district made a huge mistake in allowing this decision to even go to committee, as the person who filled out the form did not read the book. At the, that point, the process should have immediately been stopped. Furthermore, this process needs to be cleaned up. What happens when this occurs again? Can anybody just say they read a book, give reasons from the internet and it be banned from the classroom? What will our district do to prevent these missteps in the future? In addition, what has been done to solve the problem that led to this book challenge to occur? There was a huge instructional misstep that occurred with a substitute teacher that did not allow a student to pick another book, when the student voiced they didn't feel comfortable reading this book. In my classroom, this has occurred many different, for many different times for many different books. I always allow them to choose another book. If our process goes immediately to challenging a book just because one student, one family has issues with the book, where will this end? The book challenge also discussed issues with the content being inappropriate for seventh graders. Well, then I say, what are we teaching our students in social studies classes? If they get to seventh grade and do not understand how horrible slaves were treated? They don't understand the gravity? If that is the belief, then I welcome anyone into my classroom to have a discussion with my seventh graders to see if they do not understand the horrible complexities that come with discussing slavery. Moving forward, I would like our board to consider reinstating the book 47. But more than that, I would like our board to consider recommending that our district looks at our process for challenging a book, making the process more clear and also the process for appealing distinct. In addition to that, when a book challenge is brought up by a high-level district official, what is preventing the book challenge process from being biased or district members from feeling like they can't be completely honest in their opinion? As they would be speaking out against someone in more power than they have, nowhere in the book challenge process does it address, address this inequity. Lastly, I would like to leave with a few thoughts. I have read the book 47 by Walter Mosley. It isn't my favorite book on slavery. In fact, I'm partial to the book Copper Sun, but my opinion on this book isn't what matters. What matters is that we are not censoring viewpoints from our students, which limits their First Amendment rights. What matters is that our process to look at books is clear and without personal opinion and bias. What matters is that we as educators and members of the school board speak for all students and their right to choose what they read. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know what to do next.
So I, I think we're, might have some clarifying questions to ask. So if you want to.
We do, and if, if you're able to submit that in writing, I would like to have a copy of what you just read out.
Yeah, for sure. Who, I don't know who I, do I do this to all of you, to what?
Just send it to Lori.
Okay, I have your email. Okay, I can do that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think you answered my one question, which was when I was reading through the materials about the book challenge. The, the, the thing that stood out to me is something that you said. It was, and I'm just confirming here, it was a substitute teacher and not the student's regular teacher?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Because I was just saying, it is a concern if, if you've got a book list and the teacher won't let you switch when they come upon an emotional trigger like that. And I hope we, we will examine the process, I think, yeah.
Can you talk more about the legal process of the person who filled it out, didn't read it and explain more?
Yeah, I consulted with the American Library Association about, and their freedom to read foundation that they have, and I kind of went over the book process and immediately when I said that the person did not read the book, they're like, whoa, 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 don't tell me anymore. It should have stopped right there. It's hard to challenge a book if you've never read it, and if you're only basing what the book, what you see on the internet or what you hear from other people, then we're, we're agreeing to a challenge based off hearsay. So right there, it should have stopped.
I have a clarifying question because, so from my understanding, the book was taken out of the seventh grade classrooms, but it's still in the school library. So was the book to be used for, was it just like a choice book? Like you go over the shelf and, or it was like every seventh grader in the classroom going to read it and then discuss it as a group?
Good question. The book is included in our historical fiction book club for seventh grade, so I have a large bookshelf of books that range from like 1800s to about the 70s that children can pick from. And so they go, they pick a book and they talk in book clubs. They learn about the historical context with each of the books that they're reading and have discussions about those historical contexts through fiction. So not every student picks the book and it's their choice.
Okay.
And if a parent didn't want their student to read a particular book, it's okay for them to be opt out of choosing that book?
Yeah, a thousand percent. They can choose a completely different book. They can be presented with a book that's on a similar historical context or just something completely different.
So it sounds like that's always been an option where you could choose something else at that.
Yeah, it's pretty standard for our middle school curriculum. We do a lot of book club style units, and so there is a lot of choice and there's always option to opt out. Even if a kid just comes to me, it happened just last week, they're like, I just don't even like this book. Okay, cool, let's find you another one.
And is the historical, you said that a book club format is in your scope and sequence?
Mm-hmm, yes, for seventh grade.
So that's in, in the classroom activity or is it after school?
In the classroom. And usually it's, at least at my school, it's towards like the springtime of seventh grade.
Maybe I can ask this question to John or someone, but is just seventh grade that we removed it out of the classrooms? Could an eighth grade classroom have it or, or is it out of all the classroom?
That, I see Tilly nodding her head, yes, so that is correct.
It's out of all the classroom or, or only seventh grade?
Just seventh grade. Yeah.
Not exactly what I was told, because I teach seventh and eighth grade and most middle school teachers do teach multiple grade levels. Because I teach seventh grade, I was not allowed to have it in my classroom at all, which also limits the access to my eighth graders who may want to read that as a choice book.
Any other questions from the board?
No, that was good.
Thank you for engaging.
Thank you, guys.
We appreciate you being here, thank you. All right, so just a reminder, our meeting in December, we will render a decision on that. Okay, next up is the superintendent, oh no, excuse me, matters reserved for board action. We have some other instructional materials committee business to take care of. It's our student representative selection. So we have had the information for this. We workshopped it. The students were interviewed and now we are going to vote on our selection.
Who did the interviewing? Was it some of the board? I wasn't involved in the interview process, I don't think. Okay, so.
No, no, this is for, this was instructional materials.
No, this was workshopped and we looked at the applications and then the board was able to look at those and make a decision. There was no interview.
Okay, because the, there's a column on the little scoring sheet that says invited to interview and so.
Well, I think they were interviewed by the instructional materials review committee? No, no one?
No.
Okay.
A review of the application.
A review of the application process.
And there are some notes, uh, top one, top two, circled with two names next to them, does that come from the total scoring? That's my data. Okay, okay.
Yes. We're voting for two, correct? Okay. Are we to put our names on the top of these ballots? Yes? Yeah. Lori, are we getting Jenny's? Okay. 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 Oh, we're going to ask her for it? All right, Jenny, can we, can we get your two selections?
Yes, my two selections are applicant number five and applicant number 10.
Okay, thank you. All right, so did everybody turn theirs in? Okay, so John's going to go ahead and tally the votes. It's on election day too. Is Lori doing it? Yeah, while those are being tallied, can we go ahead and move on to the superintendent report? Move things along? All right.
Perfect, we'll come back to that, take the pressure off a little bit here. So thank you, Director Boconegra. Just on a somber note, we had another school shooting in the state of Washington at Ingram High School. This one hit me a little personally because I worked in the system, Seattle Public Schools, from 2004 to 2011 as a high school principal. The principal there now is a friend of mine and a couple of teachers are close personal friends, so just our hearts go out to the students at Ingram High School and to our colleagues there and families. We're thinking about them. Not going to steal too much of Dr. W's, Dr. Williams' thunder, but we had a great session today with our elementary school principals. They're super excited to come and share their school improvement plans with you at our next board meeting, our special board meeting. And I think you're going to be really impressed with the way that they're not only just thinking about school improvement, but really leaning in and, and, and acting on a regular basis to improve equitable outcomes for math instruction. So I'm excited, they're excited. I think that's going to be a good, a good session for the board and for our principals. Dr. Williams and I started a new kind of tradition and we are, we're awarding most valuable person awards as we go in and do school visits. So we're going in, asking our principals to select somebody that's gone above and beyond, taking a photo and developing a website. Just one more way we can just honor the phenomenal work that's happening out in our schools. So I've got one to share with the board, so you can see the award that we're giving there, and I'd love to at some point get the board members to go out with me and do some of that as well. I think it would be really fun. We'll take some pictures and, and I think they would appreciate having you all side by side on that.
Love to.
We are, as we know, we've, uh, we've said that we're in a, looking at a budget shortfall for the following year. Our current estimate of that is about $15 million. And just to put that in perspective, it's about 3.75% of the school budget. I'm looking over at Jennifer to make sure, it's just a little less than, she's giving me the thumbs up, a little less than 4% of our budget. So it's, it's a big deal. We did $20 million worth of cuts last year and we'll have to do 15, but it won't be catastrophic. We'll get through it. And so we've sat down with the superintendent leadership team, we've drafted up a process and. and we sort of looked at that process through a, our equity lens, and we'll be meeting with board members and doing a work session in December to share and get feedback on the process of our budget reductions moving forward. Really excited about the work of our strategic plan that's happening. We have finalized a draft vision of equity and excellence centered on our student voice that's related to our mission and vision that we did last year. And so, our next steps on the 10th is to share that draft vision with our core planning team, have them kick that around. On the 28th, we're going to have two separate sessions. We'll be working on some core values that are related to that. On the 28th, we're going to be developing our theory of action with principals and district staff. And a theory of action just kind of helps us determine everybody's role in implementing strategic plans. So, if we want our students to be able to do X, we want our teachers to engage in a certain way, we want our principals, our district leadership. So, it defines everybody's role up and down the system. And then we'll be working on developing metrics, we'll be working on strategies to align things all the way up and down the system. And we've got a couple, three board members involved in that process. Directors Bradford and Weatherspoon, and then also Rob Perkins. So, we're excited to have you continue on that. You know, I started with a somber note about a security incident where it left a student dead in Seattle. And just along those notes, we had Vancouver Public Schools, Vancouver Police Department, and Evergreen Public Schools. We met with the chiefs from Vancouver and Clark County. We're engaging in a series of meetings to, you know, identify single points of contact, to start talking about safety and, safety, practicing safety out there, doing some tabletop exercises together, getting our law enforcement into our schools to be able to get familiar with those and our procedures. And we are revisiting the SRO conversation across with our law enforcement officers, and we'll be sure to engage the board on that conversation moving forward. So, I just wanted to share those pieces, and we did what we called a pulse check with our principals today, and not like your pulse, but a quick check-in on them and how things are going out in the buildings. And, you know, they're working hard. I will tell you, they're working extremely hard, our teachers are working extremely hard, facing a lot of challenges, and yet, I'm just really proud of all of our staff leaning in under such difficult circumstances and still focusing on their school improvement planning process and continuous improvement. So, a lot of real heroic people out there in the field working hard on behalf of our children.
Thank you, John. All right, so now back to our instructional committee student selection. We have a tie, that's why we handed back. I knew that was going to happen. So, that's why we handed back the ballots. Now, I can tell you though that applicant 10 was one of the ones selected, but we have a tie between candidates one and three. So, we need to make a selection, maybe just put the number on your form, and then we'll turn them back in. So, we're voting between one and three. Yes, Jenny, one or three?
Three.
Circle is the choice at the tiebreaker, yeah.
Okay. All right, so candidates three and 10 are going to move forward. And we have a process then to go ahead and contact all of the students? Correct? All right, thank you. We're excited to get them on board.
Indeed.
All right, next up is our teaching and learning equity update. Dr. Williams is going to come up to the podium.
Good evening, directors and Superintendent Boyd. Mr. Boyd alluded to this earlier. We are in week two of our monthly cycle of working with our schools. And so, week two is when we bring all of our principals together, and we provide professional learning, and our CNI team and Ruth and company provided professional learning focused on our goals around math and our school improvement plan. And so, the focus today was based on principal feedback. So, if you'll remember, we talked about the plan, do, study, act cycle. So, after we deliver a professional learning session, we ask principals for feedback based on what they need, as well as using the times we actually spend in schools with principals, either talking about their plans or visiting classrooms, et cetera. We use that information to come back and design the learning, just to make sure we are delivering what they need in order to move forward in this process. And so, Ruth is going to walk you through a little bit about what's going to be happening on the 29th, when the schools come back to you to actually present where they are here in the fall with their school improvement plan. She's going to give you a little bit of an update. And earlier when Mr. Boyd was speaking, he talked about our MVP award that we are starting to launch. And I just, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize again the work that Ruth Beggs and our team are doing with really keeping us laser focused on instruction. I mean, she is our school improvement coordinator for the school district, and she helps us do a deep dive into the improvement science and what it's really going to take to meet these goals that we have to, to ensure that every learner can, can meet that ambitious, ambitious goals around instruction that we have for them. Okay, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ruth.
Thank you, thank you so much. Okay, so we have been setting the stage this first couple of months, and leaders, like everyone's been talking about, have been working really hard. So, we're super excited for November 29th. I want to let you know that we're going to take just a few minutes tonight, see if I can do this, to make sure that you know how we are aligning that area of promise in terms of teaching and learning. So, at the district level, like Dr. Williams said, we are really, the SIP supporters that I talked to you about last time I was here are really taking a deep dive into improvement science. We know that we need to be user-centered, which means we need to hear our kids' voices in order to understand the system from their perspectives. And we are trying to use improvement science as a tool to eliminate the predictability of outcomes that we are seeing. And we want to make sure that we have positive outcomes, of course, for every single student. So, I want to show you what you're going to see. So, on the 29th, this is the plant, the first part of the plan summary that you will see. So, the first few months of school, like I said, we've been laying the foundation by developing a solid school improvement plan that aligns with the district wide focus on math. So, on the 29th, principals, we will be presenting this summary of their plan to you. Of course, it'll be filled out. This is the template. So, as you can see, every school leader has defined a problem of practice. So, the outcomes that students experience are determined by the practices of the adults in the system. So, it is the adults that we must look to if we're going to improve outcomes for kids. So, a problem of practice, what it does is it identifies specific and pressing concerns related to equality and excellence and student outcomes. The problem of practice should be anchored in data, and the problem should be informed by an understanding of evidence-based practices. Now, the theory of action, which everyone also has, provides an opportunity to test what we think will work against what the evidence actually says. So, it enables us to put a cycle of inquiry, like Dr. Williams is talking about, the plan, do, study, act, into place, and reflect on the results we get, and then change, make changes to our practice. So, as you know, each school has named a math goal. That math goal should align to the district goal, which means it should be a minimum of 13% increase for all kids. And there also should be a named small group focus, so you'll see that according to the data, each school has chosen a small group to focus on. Okay, and in addition, of course, you'll see the evidence-based practices that they've chosen that should be supporting the math goal and their theory of action. But guess what? This is the key part. So, in the past, we've written school improvement plans, but we have not necessarily monitored progress toward the goal. This is what we must do in order to make improvement. And so, there are three things that you should hear when people are coming to talk to you about their plans. So, you'll be listening. Have they mentioned process measures? Because process measures are basically, are we doing what we said we would do? Are we implementing the things that we said we would implement? And how, how are we, what's the evidence of that? What's the evidence that the professional development that we are giving to our teachers is actually impacting the classroom? So, you'll hear about that. And the next, of course, you, that practice that we're putting into place should impact kids and their outcomes. So, we're going to be talking about two different types of outcomes. We've always talked about long-term measures, so if you think about the goal for the district, it is that we will make one years, at least 13% progress in one year in math as measured by I-Ready or SBA. So, that's the long-term measure for everyone. But the short-term measure, you know, those long-term measures only come a couple of times a year. So, in order to make progress, we have to think about, well, what are we measuring in between those big, huge marks? And so, that's where the schools are choosing what to use as a measure. Some schools will choose to use the new curriculum IM unit assessments, some will use SBA interim assessments. You'll hear different things, but the main thing that you want to listen for is, is there a short-term measure that they have named? Okay. And of course, at the school board meeting, I'm so excited about this different structure. There's a different structure. So, as you know, principals are going to be assigned to a breakout room with one of you, and they, where they will present their one-page plan, and they have to do it in five to seven minutes. So, someone will, someone will need to keep track because otherwise it could go all night. So, you will have electronic access to their school improvement plans, and then you'll have a printed copy of this, what I just showed you, their template that's all filled out. And then during each presentation, we want to encourage you to take notes on that template, make sure that, you know, you're hearing those pieces that we just talked about. If you could keep a narrow focus on improvement, that's going to help to hold us accountable. And feel free to ask principals to clarify parts of their plan if, if you didn't quite understand something that they said. And we hope that after the presentation, that you will have an opportunity to share the highlights of what you heard with your, with other directors. We hope that that will happen. Okay, once again, we have those iterative cycles. You can see from this timeline that they're not going to just do it once. They have the plan summary on the 29th, and then they're coming back with something on the 31st and the 28th, and then again on June 20th. Don't worry though, not all of us are coming back on the 31st and the 28th. All of us are going to be here on the 29th, but on the 31st and 28th, that will just, they'll all have to turn their, their updates in, but they won't all need to come. However, on the 20th, we would like all principals to come back to report out on how they did on their progress monitoring and how they ended up. Did they meet their goal? Did they exceed their goal? Why or why not, and what happened? And then hopefully they'll talk to you about next steps. These, once again, this is your SIP supporters, and we've been working really hard. Each of these SIP supporters that you see are supporting the schools that are listed there, and we've been, once again, working with, with this monthly and more. Do you have questions? First of all, I would like to say thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity, Superintendent Boyd and board members, for me to be able to be here tonight.
Go ahead, Victoria.
Question, will we have a chance to see those reports prior to the meeting so that we can at least have a cursory review of it before? Okay, great, thank you.
So, the principals have to have their, their stuff in the week prior to the board meeting, so.
I've seen teachers effectively use the I-Ready deltas to, to scaffold their own scope and sequence, and I'm, I'm pretty confident based on that, that that's a good measurement tool for the long term. So, long term is one year?
Well, we are, so the two long-term measures for the district goal and for school goals are I-Ready and SBA. SBA, of course, is just yearly, and so that's a difficult one to do. But with I-Ready, it's fall, winter, and spring, so you can get a little bit, you know, you can, you can get a lot of information from it. But, you know, you don't want to wait until winter to figure out how kids are doing. You have to be measuring along the way.
The, I guess the metric district-wide on that will be a measurement of the beginning of I-Ready to the end of I-Ready?
Actually, yes, people would be keeping track of that, but the actual metric that we're using is spring to spring.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes it a little easier to get S-back results into, into the mix. Do, I need to ask you, John and Lori, do we have these slides from this week and our last meetings on the Google Drive somewhere? Okay, thank you.
Lori said she'd be happy to send those to you, yeah.
So much.
And I just want to thank Ruth. We, she was the recipient of one of our MVP awards and got the longest-standing ovation that I've ever felt. I mean, she's just been a real support to schools. She's been laser-like in her support of principals and us at the district level to get this done, so thank you, Ruth.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, and I just have to say that it is not me. I mean, it is this, this leadership that has really opened up the opportunity for this to happen, so I'm super excited about it.
All right, thank you. All right, the good news report. Hello again.
Hi. Hello, Board of Directors and Superintendent Boyd. I'm going to let that blink on. And I'm going to start at the end, we're going to get into the EPS MVP, so we'll actually get to show the picture, and you can get an idea of what it looks like. We're going to start with a story with two Weatherspoons in it. Board member Jacqueline Weatherspoon and her daughter are a part of the Students Advocating for Equity Group, SAFE. I hope you guys take a little time to watch this video story. This is a group of students from our district who are getting together and then sharing their ideas and advocating for themselves and other students to make this a more equitable district. I was able to attend one of their planning meetings and seeing these students working together, and one of the big things they're doing right now is actively recruiting new members. They're very senior-heavy, and they don't want this organization to be left behind. So, they're out there recruiting new members and hopefully some younger members. They say they accept all members, even from elementary school if it fits, but secondary is their focus. So, I got to meet with them and talk with them, and they got to share the reason why this organization, SAFE, is important, why they want more members. this organization, SAFE, is important, why they want more members to join. I have always wonderful moments at our schools that, that sometimes I learn about days that are out there. I try to keep on track of this in our communications department, the special days, but there are a lot of them. At Burton, they celebrated Unity Day on October 19th. This comes out of the National Bullying Prevention Month and what they did was all wear orange in creative ways and, and then discuss the importance of preventing bullying in schools. Zip down to, I think you remember not too long ago, we shared a story about Columbia Valley Elementary School had started a reading buddy program and we did a video story on that. And it's really great to see that other schools are doing something very similar. They might have been doing it before, but they're sharing with us. Over at Sunset, they have third graders helping out first graders in their program. So this is pictures of the third graders and first graders just finding a place to sit down and read with, with students. And I always love students teaching student stories. Board member Weatherspoon spoke about this event that she attended. We did have pictures and this is the Discovery Cook-Offs. This is for elementary school fifth graders and everyone in the district, all fifth graders will have a chance to participate. This one, that Dr. Williams and board member Weatherspoon were judges for, occurred here at Legacy not too long ago and we really have some future top chefs in our district doing wonderful things in fifth grade. I'm still trying to make peanut butter and jelly. And then Superintendent Boyd mentioned that he'd been getting out a lot of school visits. He'd been, a lot of them are concentrating on looking at how the new math curriculum is being included in our classrooms. This is a visit at Columbia Valley Elementary School. Mathematicians at work and Superintendent Boyd got to share some math lessons from some younger teachers, the students teaching Superintendent Boyd. So I know he's getting out to a lot of our schools and just getting right into the classrooms. And then finally, I did want to share the, the staff record, the new EPS MVP. And so that's where everyone can see, this was the first one ever given out. Betsy Hemphill will forever be known as the first ever EPS MVP. And this was at Fur Crest and she was honored by Principal Stuart Anderson and Superintendent Boyd. And you can see there the, the pin that I do want to give a shout out to Aaron Wintersong, our graphic designer who designed that pin. I think it looks really cool and people will see right away that it's from our district. So excited to see that just starting off this week. And we do have a webpage just for EPS MVPs. So we'll be, we might not put all of them on social media depending how, you know, how many we put out, but we'll have everyone on the webpage so people can check on who's being honored. If there's no questions, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next is an information item. It's our financial statements that we received for review. All right. And then we'll move on to board comments. Did you have a question, Rob?
Oh, no.
Board comments. Do you want to go on board comments? Looks like you're ready to go.
Sure. I had a really exciting week in the schools already and it's only Tuesday. The choral concerts are underway and yesterday I was at, oh, help me, where was I? I was at Union High School, listening to Mr. Karn, the teacher over the choir there and every grade level down to the fourth grade, fourth, fifth, middle school, high school, just singing their hearts out. And it's, it's so nice to have those back in November, right when it's starting to get dark. It's a really good event to attend. I was given an opportunity to speak and you all know that I did music all through school and got to talk about how that pays dividends into all the decades of your life. It was a beautiful performance. I got to sit directly across from a little fifth grader that I know from church who was really excited to be part of the choir today and I'm looking forward to the one at Evergreen tomorrow. Thank you for reminding me I was at Union. There was that and also I know I had an in-person meeting at the Vancouver Schools about our legislative positions and I'll go into that in more detail, but it really looks like the impression of alignment that I've had for so long is maintaining. And I think that's all.
Thanks, Rob. Jenny. Do you have board comments?
Um, yes, I do have an update on our student board reps, but I think that it might be more impactful if Director Weatherspoon shares that just because she's visible.
Okay.
If she doesn't mind.
Oh, no, not at all, not at all.
Okay.
So we did our interviews with, I think we had five students for our student board representatives and we narrowed it down to two. Sullivan Taylor, who is a student at Heritage and Covenant, I'm going to mess his name up. I'm going to just say Covenant for now. I do not want to mess his name up. He is a student at Gila and they will be our two student board representatives. They're going to be onboarded and sworn in in December. And we had five excellent students come through and we were able to offer them sort of leadership positions in other district groups that we have. But I'm really excited about these students. They're going to be great.
I did have the opportunity to, to speak with or to leave a message for Sullivan. So I am actually offering them the opportunity to come into our November 29th meeting to sit with us during the SIP presentations, just as informal to come meet us, kind of see the process and to be with us from the start before their informal swearing in on December 13th.
Yeah. Five incredible young people. Very difficult decision. I appreciate the fact that you found other leadership opportunities for these young folks because they are absolutely stunning.
Phenomenal.
And I would like to just quickly add that we actually got 10 applicants and the committee brought it down to five. We interviewed five, brought it down to three. We brought three of them in. One withdrew. So we interviewed the final two and they ended up being our choice.
Thank you for leading us through that process. We're excited to have them on, onboard, literally onboard. All right. Anything else? Victoria?
I just wanted to let people know that we all met with Dr. Campbell regarding the feedback on that input that we were getting from the community, from all of the community, all of the people. And so that was very interesting and I know we'll be able to report on that, but I appreciated people's candor in those, those meetings. And then of course, we've all, I think, had a chance to meet with Melissa Gumbowski and talk about our legislative agenda and it was nice doing that with a Vancouver board member there as well so that we're all kind of talking the same talk. I had a really fun time yesterday at Burton Elementary School. I have become a member of their School Counseling Advisory Council. And yesterday was the first meeting. They talked about their vision and I'm going to send you the PowerPoint that they used with us. What was interesting is just talking about the things that as school counselors that they have concerns about. None of it was a shock in light of everything that's gone on. But what was interesting is they have a pretty good size group of Native Hawaiian and other Pacific Islander students. And they're really, oh, sorry. Thank you for that. So they're very interested in helping those students be more proficient. And one of the things that came up that I just hadn't even thought about is that there's a certain group of students that their lang, their native language does not have a written form, which I had heard that before, but it just didn't click with me of how that's impacting the academic success of those students and also the social, emotional aspects of things. And so they were brainstorming some ideas, but one of the things that struck me is if you can't, you can't turn, you can't take the spoken language and turn it into their native in written form, how do they get information from the school and all of that? So we talked, and of course I offered up the fact that we might want to talk about doing some videos that the translator can translate for the school into their native language and they have a translator that they work with so that when they want to bring the parents into the schools to have meetings and different things, that they know why it's important to come in. And so, you know, we have the technology and we have the, the facility now to really do it in a good way that it just seemed to me like if spoken word is how they communicate, then we need to communicate in spoken word and not try to have them read things that they're never going to be able to read.
And of course, you're talking about our Chuk students who speak Chukis from Micronesia. And yes, the language has not traditionally been a written language and we are reaching out and looking for people to serve as interpreters. It's been difficult. We've had a bit of a wave of those students come in. They add a lot to our, a lot to our district. So we're excited to serve them.
Yeah. And I felt like I, what was encouraging to me was the conversation wasn't, it was a very hopeful and a very upbeat belief in being able to reach across and bring them into our community and help them have achievement in school and feel good at school and that their families feel like they're part of our community and our school community. So I, I'm, I'm excited about being on that committee with them. They, they don't meet that often, so, but it's, it was nice to be invited. So anyway, that's all I have.
That's good. Thanks, Victoria. Just a couple of things from me. As Victoria mentioned, Dr. Tammy Campbell, who conducted our stakeholder feedback process. Originally, she was going to be here this evening, but she couldn't make it. So we are putting that on our 29th agenda before we get into the SIP improvement plan. So she'll be here to present to us some of the information that she got. The next thing I wanted to mention is we did have the Heritage grand opening celebration, which was a lot of fun. They had a lot of student performances. They, they piggybacked it on community event where the leadership kids were doing some stuff for the kids in the community and it was, I thought it was a fantastic, fantastic day and beautiful addition to the school. And the last thing I wanted to mention was the Learn Here Awards. Oh, yes, Lori, you're not getting, not getting by, but we did, we did receive an email from Sean Philbrook with identity Clark County and they're recognizing this year from Evergreen two awards. Monica Stonier, who we all know, and our very own Lori Stroll is being recognized. Well-deserved honor. I'm telling you, this lady has been the glue around here and she keeps all of us in line and she's amazing and she does so much for public education in our system and I couldn't be more proud of her for winning this award. Well-deserved.
Congratulations, Lori.
All right. Next up is future agenda items. Do we have anything?
I'd have one, but I was going to ask about the math curriculum and up walks Ruth Beggs and tells us all about the math curriculum and the, and the scaffolding that they're putting around that. Just wanted to mention how appreciative I am of having the idea before I could even mention it. I'm glad to see this. So we're going to learn next week what the plans are or next meeting.
29th.
29th.
Yes.
Next week's a different thing.
Okay.
Just wanted to say something positive about that.
Anything else? All right. Next up is future agenda items or, excuse me, we just did that. Public comments. At this time, we're going to call up any community member who wishes to address the board. They may do so during the designated time on the agenda for public comments, as long as the comments are not personnel-related or about an individual employee or student that are not legal in nature. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to address the board. Comments need to be directed to the board of directors as a whole and may not be addressed to any individual member of the board, administrative staff or the audience. Please state your name and district affiliation if any. First on our list is, do we want to do the person that's online first?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, Jennifer Bradley's online. Okay. Is she ready, Jennifer?
Hi. My name's Jennifer Bradley. I'm a first-grade teacher at Crestline and I'm speaking to the board tonight in support of our PSE and paraeducators. Our PSE classified staff are undeniably some of our most important vital essential school staff. If you don't know this to be true, I would like you to please take a moment and imagine a single school day without our amazing PSEs. You would have to imagine a day without bus drivers. So most students would not have transportation to and from their schools. No paraeducators would greet students in the morning and help them safely cross the street in busy school zones. No paraeducators would be providing academic and behavior support to special education students or providing services, those services that they have outlined in their IEPs. There would be no paraeducators to provide language support to our multilingual students. No paraeducators to supervise students at recess and lunch. No paraeducators to help students get home safely each day. No resource center staff to assist our families with access to food, housing, transportation, medical care and much more. No IT staff to help troubleshoot the myriad tech and internet issues that pop up every day. Can you imagine a day without paraeducators? School can be a tough place sometimes already. Without paraeducators, it would be an undeniable or an unendurable, totally dysfunctional nightmare, not to mention a huge liability. Our PSEs are invaluable to our students, staff and our schools and it's past time that we show them the respect that they not only deserve, but they earn every day with their dedicated hard work in Evergreen Public Schools. There's a saying, "Show me your budget and I'll show you your values." Evergreen educators and families highly value our PSEs and it's high time that EPS leadership shows how much we respect and value our PSEs with far better compensation, paid collaboration time and training. They do right by our students and staff every day. It's past time that we do right by them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right. Next up is Brandon Chase. Brandon, if you want to come on up? Brandon?
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Boyd. My name is Brandon Chase and I work over at Crestline Elementary as well. I wanted to come in today and be very diplomatic, to craft a well-written story, sell a narrative in a way that makes a point but avoids being an air tent, but I simply can't. The district is failing and we're out of time to keep pretending that it isn't. Yeah, we've heard the COVID narrative about the educational deficiencies of so many students. We've heard the countless hours of all the work that we're going to do to bring up math scores and increase this or that metric, but to say we're putting the cart before the horse and addressing these issues would be an understatement. Our schools are simply not a safe learning environment. Let me repeat that. Our schools are not a safe learning environment. Our students simply can't be expected to learn in these settings. If you truly want to get back to educating our kids, this has to be your number-one priority, no question. You have parents telling you these stories about their kids' experiences. You have teachers telling you these stories from their own classrooms. You have classified staff telling you these stories from every single environment that they are in. And the response so far is that we're holding a job fair or the response is that we're going to draft our least senior paraeducators and we're going to send them over to Hollingsworth or Cascade and pull them from the buildings that already need their support and are already understaffed. I can't even begin to wrap my head around how short-sighted and dismissive that response is. You'd need more qualified employees and you needed them months ago. You'd need more qualified employees and you needed them months ago. Evergreen Public Schools used to be the school district locally, not a school district, but the school district. Parents were proud to send their kids here. Staff was proud to work here. And we used to pay wages that exceeded other local districts to get them here. Your staff used to recruit their friends and colleagues to leave their districts and come to ours because of that. Now you could consider yourself lucky if they don't tell them to run the other direction. It doesn't take an expert to see that as wages have fallen behind, more positions have opened and remained unfilled. As employee pride has fallen, so has employee recruitment and retention. You have the ability to change this if it's important enough, but it doesn't seem to be. As of today, you have 160 different classified job postings on our website, 160. If you're not going to do something to get competitive in the workforce, this number is only going to increase. Let me give you an example. Vancouver Public Schools sign-on bonus for a paraeducator is currently $500. Portland Public Schools, $3,000. Evergreen, come get beat up for two weeks. Go to Hollingsworth or Cascade, then we'll think about sending you over to the school that you applied for and got a job. Thank you.
All right, next up is, is it Carl Legan, waiter?
Legan Walter.
Oh, hi, thank you for joining us.
Hi, I'm Carl Legan Walter. I'm a seventh-year special education teacher. I used to love coming to work. I would teach students reading, writing, math. They made progress. I really took pride in the fact that I would exit students from my services every year. Things are different now. At Image Elementary this year, all of our special education staffing is going to support students that need one-on-one and two-on-one assistance just for their safety. Even with our full special education staff supporting these students, we still have students injuring peers on a daily basis, injuring staff multiple times a day. All other students in special education are getting very little, if any, support, making the district vulnerable to legal action from parents. These students are, across the board, falling further and further behind, many of them escalating their behaviors because of it. Math and reading are not even being considered at this point. Behaviors in and outside of a special education are taking everything from our building staff to handle. I want to be clear, this is not due to any shortcomings due to our staff. Our building administration-certified and classified staff are working as hard as they can. Our custodian is meeting with students on a daily basis. We badly need more staff to be able to serve our students. It is clear to me that this is not a problem at Image, but a district-wide problem at elementary schools. My friends at Orchards, Hollingsworth, Crestline, Emerald, and Moore are all saying the same things. See for yourself, I invite each one of you to take a tour of our school. Spend some time talking with the other special education staff in my building and any other special elementary buildings. I know that without major changes in support for special education in our next contract, I will not be returning next year. And frankly, I'm not sure that I can be able to finish this year. We need to replace structures that we lost with neighborhood schools rollout. We need more support for our paraeducators. We need to create a job that paraeducators want to do and we're not getting beaten up every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Next up is Kathy Emrick.
Katie.
Oh, Katie. Sorry about that.
Okay, happens all the time. Hi, I also am a special education para at Image. I've worked for Evergreen Public Schools as a para since 2012. I took some time out from the district when my kids were small, but last year I was so eager to return to EPS. I love being a paraeducator. To be able to form relationships with students and see their progress is food for my soul. It's what gets me out of bed in the morning. Nobody who works in education is here for the money, so there is a certain level of understanding that you're going to put in some time unpaid if you want to do the job well. As a former SLC para, I know that the hard things are the most rewarding, so I was prepared for a difficult job when I started my special education para position at Image this year. What I wasn't prepared for was the impossibility of finding fulfillment in my job. My team is technically fully staffed, but the intensity of the needs of a handful of our students means that all my time is spent with one or two students, keeping them physically safe. There is very little learning that can happen because of how much time is spent managing behavior. When a student's in crisis, it's not safe to transition them elsewhere or to transition staff. This means that schedules get interrupted because crisis happens dozens of times a day. Breaks are missed or taken late. Out of a caseload of 54 special education students, only about six of them at our school have extreme behaviors or bathrooming needs and the rest have academic needs. I have met with one of my academic students once this school year because if there are too few staff with our highest needs kids, it's a safety issue. If the academic kids aren't seen by staff, it's not a safety issue. The staffing limitations have put us in a position where it's necessary to triage special education services. This means that the overwhelming majority of students to which we are obligated to serve are not having their needs met and honestly, neither are the highest needs kids. How much learning can happen when staff haven't been provided with the basic training necessary to quickly and effectively de-escalate a student in crisis and therefore spend most of our time bodily blocking one student from harming himself or others? As a parent, I am deeply concerned about the well-being of our kids. If my child had an IEP, which he probably will at the end of this year, and I found out his support staff had been unable to meet with him even once this school year, I would be livid. Until the district makes the job desirable for applicants, the staffing crisis will continue and we will fail our kids. The starting wage for a para is the same as a target employee. Why on earth would anyone seek out a job where they feel constantly demoralized and ineffective due to the lack of support and training over a retail position? Allow me to be crystal clear, I do not blame the teachers. I do not blame my coworkers or the building administration. The responsibility for change lies with the district. Sorry. If we're having trouble filling positions, it's not because nobody wants to work anymore, it's because the positions are not appealing. The pay is in no way commensurate to the responsibilities or hazards of the job. Please fix it.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our public comments for this evening. At this time, we were going to go into a recess where the board will sign papers. We will reconvene for a board workshop where we'll do a legislative update and then we will have an executive session where we review the performance of a public employee. Thank you.